Okay, good. Good evening. We're here to the county council. We're gonna start with an invocation. Those of you who would not like to join in, just don't. And we will start that way. And Reverend Ware?
Pledge.
And then pledge first.
Yes.
We'll do the pledge first with County Rish and then Richie Ware. Stand up, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Could we bow our heads for a moment of prayer? Father God, as we seek you on behalf of these men and women for wisdom, for their decisions, and that they would receive godly counsel in decisions, Father, and for the residents of the city, God, and even the county, Father, that your grace and your mercy would be upon us. Father, that we would do your will in and out of their offices, Father, and that you would bless their families, Father, for the burden that they carry for the decision-making of our community. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. So we'll start off with a reading of the last meeting's minutes.
I'm able to approve the minutes as presented.
One second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hi. Approve, disapprove. Okay, good. Thanks. Oh, what?
You don't need to do that.
I don't need to do that? Thanks. Okay, new business. Uh... Let me see, Scott Sargent here, so... Just we pass him by here.
We're putting down the...
Okay, we're putting it down here. So, resolution, next business, Resolution 2013-33, Approval of Amendment to Economic Development. I'm sorry? Mr. Baker?
Yeah.
That's your baby.
Yeah, this is a resolution, refers to a resolution adopted by the Connerville Redevelopment Commission on December 7, 2009. Excuse me. And it's an amendment of an economic development area, commonly known as a TIF area, and an allocation area, and approval of an economic development plan supplement. And the, uh... It's an amendment of what was done in 2009 whereby Carbon Motors was the taxpayer at that time. It was known as the Carbon Motors Economic Development Area. This reading, this resolution amends that, so it'll be known as the Wayzata Connersville LLC area, and they'll be the designated taxpayers.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll take a vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. I move to accept Resolution 2013-33.
Second.
We have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? Opposed? Okay, fine, passed. Okay. Resolution 2013-34, Park Refund. And how much was that, Julie?
$1,402.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2013-34.
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, fine. And Pending Ordinance 3036, deletion of handicap parking sign. Who wants to add that? Would it be?
Counselor.
Counselor.
Chief of Police, may I address that?
I don't recall the address. Lady called me the other day and...
Seven twenty-nine grand.
Seven twenty-nine grand. And I think she had that for her husband, and he passed away, and she'd like that removed.
Okay.
Before we can remove it, we need to get it, get this done here this way, so...
Any questions?
I move to pass Pending Ordinance 3036 on first reading.
Second.
It was second, and then... Yeah.
Go ahead, in favor say aye.
Aye. What'd you say?
All opposed.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we go to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? And third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Opposed? Oh, no, no, approved. Abused. Great. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. Opposed?
All opposed.
It passes.
It passes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And Pending Ordinance 3037, Transfer to the Park.
It says, "Pooh chemicals supplies to other equipment."
"Transferring sewer chemicals and supplies to other equipment."
But I don't know what the other equipment is.
So...
I move to pass Pending Ordinance 3037 on first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, move for suspension of rules.
So moved. Second.
Favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay. Favor?
Okay.
All right. Okay, opposed? Okay, fine. And then Fran, you wanted to bring up, it's not on your, your agenda, but Fran wanted to bring up the sewer connect.
Yes, the Board of Works earlier today approved a sewer connect outside the city limits. The people have agreed to a wave of annexation. Should we want to annex the property, they will not oppose it. They already have city water, and the address is 185 South County Road, 300 West. And they have to construct a lift station to, and pay for all plumbing and necessary pipe to bring to the city connect. So that's passed with the Board of Works, and we now need council approval.
So any discussion on that?
I move to accept it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's a resolution, right? Or just an application, isn't it? So we don't have to go to...
So, Mr. Baker, how do you want this handled, the sewer connect?
I see the document.
Yes.
I think in the past we've just done it.
Yeah, it'd be like a resolution.
Okay, so it's passed.
Yes.
Thank you. So next would be public forum. Anybody out there?
Yep.
Ruby, come on, you have to come up here.
Okay, sir, hello. No problem.
Thank you. Okay, good. I don't have a thing, so keep it.
You're shy, Ruby.
The public forum, I've asked three times, I think. This would be the third time. Why it can't be down to seven? Because if I got a question, ask no business, I feel like public forum, I can't get in, in it. And they said it would be down there.
I thought it would. I went by my junior for last month's meeting.
Yeah, but I had talked to you, and you said that you could bring it down. You thought you did right, and you said you was wrong. You did say.
Well, I probably, I used my old agenda from the last month's meeting instead of the last meeting.
Yeah, well, can we bring it down here?
So you want to bring public forum down?
You want it seven?
Yeah.
Right, right.
And it feel like if anybody, just not only me, but if you got anything to say, you go through this A, B, C, and, you know, you don't feel like you can report anything. Public forum, you got a little leadway there to say something.
Gotcha.
I appreciate it.
Problem with that?
Nope.
John, is that an issue?
No, just do it by acclamation, I would.
Okay. So you'll bring it down to, what, number seven? Or seven?
Put it under miscellaneous business, is that?
Yeah, somewhere, or before that, it's fine.
Is that the last thing before read?
So we got something to say, we can say it, you know.
You don't feel like people will wait, like we have a whole bunch here that have to wait a whole long time?
Well, I just felt like it, it used to be down there. Why did it get changed?
Well, I don't know, I'm just...
I think the reason they moved it up is so that if you have something to say, you can say it prior to the vote. Because once the votes are taken, they're fine.
Well, yeah.
So if you...
I still think you are bringing that.
Or possibly prior to the department meeting, department heads.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir, come on up.
Name Drigger Hopper. I'm just checking in to see if there's any information on a proposed house to be tore down on Second Nipple, the Red House.
Well, we're working on that, okay?
Okay.
Because it takes a process, and we're going through that. And we talked to John, and, but it just takes a long process here because the house was foreclosed on, and the owners of, nobody really wants to claim the house, but somebody's responsible, let it go that way. But we're working on it, we're mowing the grass around there and everything else. So where do you live?
I live across the street.
Across the street.
The work of...
Chemical. We haven't forgot you, believe it or not. That's a priority on our list.
I believe the matter's pending in court now.
Yeah.
My recollection is we got the lawsuit filed, served the bank and the mortgage company and the two owners. You know the names of the owners, I forget. And they've been served with process. At least it's out there. I have to check service, but hopefully we don't have to do it by publication and speed things up if we don't.
That's one we haven't boarded it up or anything, because it's service putting money into a house that we're looking to tear down. We don't want to put a bunch of plywood on it and everything else and spend that money, or we need that money to tear it down. So it is in the process, and it is a priority, and we are keeping the grassmower around, I understand, and everything else, so just bear with us.
Okay.
This one's a four of them.
Before we go, can, per my public record, can we speak to how much the condition of this house? I mean, I've seen it, I don't know how many other people have seen it.
It's a very, very poor condition. It needs to be torn down.
Is it one-story? Is the windowsill on the couch?
It's a corner lot.
Roof flaps?
The roof's peeling off, it's a metal roof, and it's starting to roll. And if the wood's rotten underneath, and it's gonna fall down if we don't do something. I hate to see some kind of kid or somebody in there messing around or whatever the thing goes, so... So we're doing what we can legally, you know, to...
You're the folks that made improvements to your property?
Yes.
Okay, just gonna thought, sure. Looks very nice, so hopefully we can get the problem taken care of shortly.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Dave, on that matter, just curiosity, are we doing anything with the property next to Leonard's place?
Nope.
Because I stopped and looked at that again. I mean, no paperwork, no nothing?
No, the council, all the paperwork's complete. The council refused to appropriate money to...
I would ask the council just for me to go buy it and take a look at it. It is absolutely awful.
Where was it by then, here?
The one next to Leonard's.
Oh, I've seen it.
Yeah, it's awful, and I'm afraid it is gonna fall down there.
The one, the one by his house is pretty bad.
It's pretty bad. And I mean, I don't know, I would ask the council to think about it, maybe for the next meeting, and, and we really think about it. I know it's gonna be expensive to tear that one down, but if you get out and walk around, it's just awful, approximately.
I think, though, the difference is, Gary, I think that, that when we get the okay to tear the red one down, I think the city might try it themselves versus that two-story job is a little bit bigger than what we got and we can handle. And that's gonna be have to be contracted, and last time it was roughly around twenty, a little over $20,000.
That was just to tear it down, that didn't count.
That's gotta call.
Yeah, that'd count, haul it away and all that, so...
I mean, I certainly understand that. It's just, it's so bad.
Something like a one-story wood house is no big deal for the city, streets department wouldn't have to, but something that, that big's gonna have to cost some money.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just afraid about the neighbors. I mean, they're right, if it falls, it just falls right on them, and so... I was just worried about it. Okay, thank you. All right, so departmental reports. Which council, come on back up.
Okay, we had 1,071 law reports, 23 citations issued, two orders violated, 28 warnings issued, 10 personal injury accidents, 47 property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and 66 arrests. And bars, my budget here, anybody got any questions?
Gasoline, you listed $264.90. That's the reason your total expenditure for the month was 185,577.68. Last month you spent $11,610 on gasoline.
Sometimes, Fran, I think it's the, the way the due date's wrong, or whether you get paid on what budget.
Yes, I, I know what...
It looks like last month we paid two months' worth, so...
And if you look in February, we didn't pay anything at all.
I, it's, it's a billing problem from, from the service, station people. But that's the reason your budget is well under $200,000. Okay.
That looks good.
Yeah, it looks great, but next week.
David had a question for you, too.
Next month.
I know we're, I know you're not done for the month yet, but I'm sure the overtime's gonna be pretty high with all the bicentennial stuff. Do you have an idea?
Yeah.
You want to tell me?
Just for the bicentennial?
Yeah.
It's just shy of $20,000, so...
That's overtime.
We will be coming back to do another edition of this overtime next week.
And, and, and if you add this, just look at ballpark figure, what we pay on overtime on the last three months, for instance, and just tack that on top of that, that took care of, she called that one, good, appropriate that month. And that's on, and what's left isn't enough to get us through next year, so...
It's not enough to get us through next month.
Might we not, that's true. So, but, uh, we had, I will say, the team, and they really were impressed with the law enforcement presence, and we kept everything secure, and we didn't have any problems that I know of at all. And everything went off well, and all that, so... Hey, my guys, anything else?
Nothing else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Street Department?
He's not here.
Not here?
David, Toby isn't here, but I'm gonna give his report. He wasn't able to make it. We have it in front of you. Any questions on what they accomplished last month? Total expenditure was $92,201.52 for motor vehicle highway and the Department of Transportation.
Any questions? We fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Fire Department?
How we doing?
Fine. You're like a movie star now, it's like in the TV.
Yeah. Eighty-two total runs, 454 and a half hours on emergency, we did 13 inspections, a lot more than that because of the bicentennial. And then we had nine investigations, three pre-planning tours, 250 and a half hours of training. Was very busy with the bicentennial events and the required inspections, which had the hazmat spill. And we had to break down and replacement of engine one, and part-time, worked 12 days for approximately savings of $4,000. And on my overtime, the month of June, I had $3,333 to be returned back from the hazmat spill, and then bicentennial, I was just about $3,200 of overtime.
Questions?
How's the new fire vehicle?
It's working out real well.
Good. Want to get a letter of goods? What are you doing with the old one?
Shelbyville School Corporation is presenting a proposal. They would like to use it for a training truck, and it would be a nice thing to do, but they gotta present that to the Board of Works, you know, it's probably gonna be on.
Are we donating?
I don't know what the proposal will be.
All right.
The cost of operating Troy's Department, $211,561.89.
Thank you very much. EMS?
Come on, sir. Okay, for the month of June, we made 185 runs. Our expenses for the city share was $45,079.71. Our receipt was $6,084.08, for a total of $38,995.63.
Any questions?
How's the ambulance running?
Oops, sir.
Pardon? How's the ambulance running, number one?
So far, it's still running.
Taylor, you jumped at overtime, $6,200.
We had quite a few off sick last month.
Really? Injuries or just the illness?
Just illness.
Illness, okay.
Well, two of them was injuries, but not related to orders, and then everything else was illness.
Any questions? That's it. Thank you very much. Park Department, I don't see Mike here. So, anybody else? City TV, Mr. Paulsy.
For the month, 15 hours, 30 minutes of meetings, 7 hours, 54 minutes of original programming, several live programs. Actually, all the bicentennial will be on next month's report, so it's an enormous amount we did on that. I'm pretty tired. Any, any questions?
Questions? Thank you very much. Okay, old business. We'll go to pending ordinance 3034, amending the capital improvement plan, number three, final reading. So, who, anyone like to say anything about that? This is, understanding this, is we are going to give the EDG an additional amount of money to show support. And, I'm sorry, it wasn't the last thing, but I don't think it passed.
It passed on first reading.
Passed on first reading, but it didn't...
We didn't suspend the rules.
Okay.
It is to increase what we're giving to the EDG by $20,000.
Right.
There we go.
Yeah, so, and the county is not part of this, right?
No, they're still at 60.
They're at 60,000. And there, and again, I apologize for not being here, just to bring me up. Is this, the additional 20 is to show support and to possibly use for getting an economic development director?
Correct.
Okay. So discussion?
I thought that we were gonna have it separated, were we not?
We did.
Have what separated?
From, because there were two things on the ordinance last time, is that correct?
Yeah, they're already separated.
Okay, so they're separated, okay.
Yes.
I move we pass ordinance, second, 30.
We have a second?
Before we pass that.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I would still think that this is the wrong move. I mean, we, we just got our first financial statement from the EDG last meeting, and that was two months old, and until we start seeing them on a regular basis, I can't justify increasing their, their finances at all.
You can only vote now. You can't stop it on this reading.
I know.
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, since I wasn't here last night, I'll throw my word in there. I think that, I just don't see EDG doing much better than it's doing now unless we get a director. I don't think we'll get a director if we don't pay a director.
Exactly.
And so, uh, whether I can vote for this, I'm not sure, but I would say that we need, we, we need to get a director, and you've gotta have the money for him, so you get what you pay for.
Before we get a director, we need to have some financial oversight. I mean, we got one, one financial record from April, and I had a constituent call and ask, and they told him that's not public record. So then if we got one, and the entire time I've been here, which is about a year and a half, and the public can't get them, who can?
It's a good question.
I mean, that's, that's something we need to fix before we give them any more money. That, that's very important. I mean, we're talking taxpayer dollars.
John, why can't we get a financial statement from?
That matter's gonna be discussed at our next meeting, and frankly, I'm gonna recommend that they make that public.
Okay.
I would strongly encourage everyone to delay this until that's rectified.
Any more discussion?
We did discuss the fact that it was like an $80,000 salary.
Yes.
And so, 60 was coming from the county.
That's the fun of the whole thing.
They're proposing that it would be around an $80,000 salary. I don't think a salary's been set, hasn't Debbie proposing that?
There would probably be, be some benefits in addition to that.
So what's your feeling on that, Dave?
I feel like we need a director, and I feel like that the money has to be available to show them that we're, we're really serious about funding it, and that the money's gonna be there, or we're not gonna get the best person for the job.
So how's your, what's your feeling on, on, on waiting for the financial statement? Is it an issue for you, or?
No, I think we oughta go out and vote on it. I think we should've voted on it last week. I do, too.
I mean, I understand Gabe's issue here, and I mean...
Gabe, do I make a motion to table it? Why, ping it up?
I move to table this. We have a second?
Well, we already had one motion. Nancy had big motion.
Oh, yeah, Nancy made a, yeah, I'm sorry.
Debbie had seconded.
Debbie seconded, and so...
I made a motion to pass it.
So we've made the motion, so our discussion's over. So shall we vote? All those of...
I'd say do a roll call on that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. I'll, go ahead.
Councilman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nabi?
No.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Stevens?
Okay, passes. And so that is an ordinance, right?
No, we've already done it.
No, we've already...
All right, thank you. And so now let's move on to pending ordinance 3035. Um, and this is for the economic development public hearing, is that correct?
That's what we were doing last night.
No.
This is to appropriate the money, the $110,000.
So we need to do that, don't we? Or do we not?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so let's do it. So we need to appropriate the $110,000.
We need to have a public hearing on that.
Okay. Let's do that. Public hearing. Right, so we have to move on.
We gotta gavel out open. We gotta gavel out open.
You have to get your gavel.
Gavel. There we go. I got to use it here, you have it back.
Well, you need to close it.
Okay, so, so we have a discussion.
If there's anybody in the public that has any...
Anybody out there in the old public? No? We'll close it. Okay. There you go. Cheer it back. So we can move on, right?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance, or pending ordinance, 3035.
Second.
We have a second? All in favor? Do, you, all in favor say aye.
Roll call.
You want a roll call vote on this? Okay. Go ahead.
Roll call.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nabi?
No.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Rish?
Yes.
Passing?
Yes.
Okay.
Suspend rules.
Oh, we have to do that, don't we? Suspend the rules, turn the final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Well, can we do it all in favor?
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call vote on that.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nabi?
No.
That stops it.
That does, okay. So then we can move on. Okay, let's go to pending ordinance 3030, which is the utilities contract 30, a final reading. Any discussion?
I move we pass it.
We have a motion?
I move, second.
We have a second?
We would like to mention that there's no increase in the salaries for, for three years. However, they do get a longevity increase each year of $150. Someone with 30 years experience, for instance, will get a check of $4,500 in December under longevity. So to say they don't get anything at all is, is not really, really correct, because they get $150 more per year in longevity.
Okay.
I'd also like to say that I still have my disagreements with the contract. I don't believe that everyone should be required to be part of the union, nor should people be promoted solely on seniority. I think those two are, are things that are just fundamentally wrong, but...
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so let's have a roll call vote.
Councilman Nabi?
No.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Okay, so let's suspend the rules? Oh, that's the third meeting, okay. All right, fine, so it passes. Okay, the council member, Nancy would like to be replaced on negotiating committee? So do we have anybody up here who would like to do that?
I'm a rate committed under the...
Probably, yeah, I would've done it, but the problem is it's at 10:30, 1:30, and 2:30. I mean, it's in the middle of the day, and...
Yes.
Some of us work. Some, some of us do.
If it were moved...
If you have an attorney, you can do it.
Like after five, I'd do it.
Yeah.
Instead of that time, I gotta be at school.
Same. So it's a time issue, unless, who's this guy? And Tom can't do it, because he's on the... So how do we handle that? I mean, how do we handle that, John?
This is just overall, right? It's not each time.
Well, meeting in July is at 10 o'clock, 1:30, and 2:30.
It's on a reopen of the contracts for a street park.
Street, EMS.
EMS.
Transfer.
Transfer station on, um...
Wages and benefits.
Wages and benefits, right.
Why can't they be done after five?
I don't know.
They were. We, we did do that before. I think each individual ones kinda work with you. They did with me.
So if it's not an issue that we could do it after five, then we have people that can take the spot, correct? I mean, you think it'd be an issue?
He's not listening right.
Well, I'm just asking anybody, anybody out there would...
The utility union's usually pretty... The utility union's usually pretty open to negotiations.
It's okay, okay, great.
I'd like to have Nobby there.
All right, uh-huh. Well, yeah, would you like to be on it if that could be arranged?
Yeah.
Well, why don't we do that? Can we do that tentatively?
I can talk to the representative. He's the one that suggested the morning, evening, and afternoon.
When is the date?
Uh, further. July thirtieth.
That'll be middle of fair, we'll be able to do that. I'll be able to do the ones prior to that.
It's gonna run pretty late in the evening. I think Phil said an hour and a half for each, each, uh.
There's three different unions, isn't there?
Three different groups, someone union represented by one union.
Three different groups.
I can do the thirtieth.
No. Well, could, yeah.
There's no legal requirement that you have a councilperson on it. It's just, I think, desirable to do so.
But it seems like a big sense.
Yeah. It's good to do it.
Could you do a tag team, could you like a tag team? Can I do one and you do one?
Possible.
I think so.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I mean, that way.
It's a different date, I could do it.
Yeah, same here.
You came in on the utilities, didn't you?
I'm sorry. I think the one on thirtieth, I could do it.
Once.
Yes.
Yeah, he can do the thirtieth. I can't do the thirtieth, but I can. What I'm saying is, can, can we just have to have one or can we have two halves?
The union representative comes from?
Indianapolis.
So, he would probably prefer.
What are the times again?
Ten, one thirty, and two thirty.
Yeah, ten, one thirty, and two thirty.
You need a different person each time.
Yeah, I'm saying a different person each time. Or, or, I'd be, that's better than nothing than not having him there or he or I there at, at all. But it was, seems like it would, it sounds like they wanted it in the daytime, so since he comes so far, if that's, that's the way it is, I mean, I'd be more than happy to do it if it was done on a Friday.
Maybe don't do it again.
You can check in. Let's, let's tentatively put Gabe and I are down or whatever. Tentatively. I mean, I'll be glad to do it on a Friday 'cause I'm off Friday and. Then maybe we can split or not split. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I just can't do the thirtieth after five.
Okay, very good. Miscellaneous businesses, does anybody have anything to bring up?
I.
Oh, you gotta come up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I heard they hit you with the gavel.
Oh, don't hit me. Uh, I'm Scott Sargent, um, and, uh. Change your name.
Yeah, we moved you down.
I got a phone call, I got a phone call at seven o'clock saying, can you go to the city council meeting, uh, for the Ohio Valley Tournament?
So, everybody who doesn't know who you are, tell us.
I'm Ann Kirshner.
Ann Kirshner.
I am the gateperson for the Ohio, for the last twenty, we won't go there, years, uh, for all of the tournaments. And we, I was at a meeting of the Ohio Valley Tournament Committee last week and I think there is a misconception on the part of the city council, on the part of the city of Connersville in general as to the economic impact that that tournament has on the, on the city. I was there twenty-seven hours between, uh, Thursday night and last night. Everybody that went in there came by me. I took in over thirty-five hundred dollars alone in gate money. That's a lot of money. And it was a small tournament. We had two teams back out of that tournament. I think that, and I understand with all the good stuff that went on with the bicentennial, obviously I was involved with that. But I think Connersville has a real opportunity, the city of Connersville has a real opportunity, um, to help out the Bay Ruth situation with their large tournaments such as the Ohio Valley Tournament. We will have twenty-seven teams coming in from all over the Ohio Valley region. They are going to be here in town. They are going to be spending money, lots of it. Because unlike the tournament we had last weekend where there were local people, the farthest people came from Terre Haute. These people are coming from large distances. They are staying in the area. They are going to be spending money on, at the grocery store, at the dollar store, um, at Walmart, at local institutions, because basically they're gonna be in town from ten in the morning till God knows when at night, depending on the weather. So, I think that it's a little bit, um, naive, at least from my point of view, because I see all these people. And I'm in the Chamber of Commerce there. Where can I go to the grocery store? Where can I find a, a good pharmacy? You know, where can I go to get this? Where can I go to get that? These people shop locally. They put money into the town, albeit for a short period of a time. So, the Bay Ruth organization would please ask the council to consider any kind of donation to help us fund these tournaments. We have to pay to have these tournaments. The tournament we had last weekend cost us fifteen hundred dollars just to have the people here. It's all volunteer down at the Bay Ruth. Um, it's something very, very positive for the community. And we would ask that the city council, and we're not asking for a huge, we're asking for anything at this particular point in time. And I think it would be good for the community and I think it would be good for the city of Connersville to show its support for something that does bring so many people into this community. Cities have turned these tournaments down uh, because they didn't want the hassle and they didn't have the people. We are very fortunate here in Connersville to have the people who do the volunteer work, that we can put these things on. It gives a positive input into this area. We all know that we can use that, that, at any particular time. So, we would ask if you would please consider, um, giving any kind of donations for us to help defray the costs of putting on the tournament.
So, you're talking about just the one tournament, right?
Yeah, it's a Ohio Valley Tournament. It starts on next, uh, it starts on Wednesday, a fair week, thank you very much. Yeah, that's a hassle. Um, they're having an opening thing with the Richmond River Rats over at McBride Stadium. Play starts on Thursday at ten in the morning. It goes all day, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Uh, teams will be from West Virginia, Ohio, Northern Kentucky, Illinois, Indiana. Uh, they're staying here in Connersville. They're staying in Richmond. They're staying in the outline areas. They're at the campgrounds down on one twenty-one.
Stay with the host families?
No, this is not a host family. And that's another, thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Webber.
You're welcome.
Um, that's another really important factor. These parents who bring their children, they are paying, not like the host family situation where the, the kids were basically taken care of. These families that travel are paying all the, the load themselves. In other words, they're staying in the hotel rooms. They are buying the food, um, and they are buying it for the kids also. So, I, I think that, that broadens the, that broadens the economic impact. There are twenty-seven, twenty-seven teams with fifteen kids per team. They are nine-year-olds. Nine-year-olds do not travel typically without both parents. Sometimes grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins will show up. We expect a huge, huge gate. But again, that's only a small part of the puzzle. We would simply ask the city of Connersville, consider some appropriation to help us defray, at least, we don't expect you to pay the whole thing, but we would appreciate a donation.
What's the whole thing?
Well, how much is it?
The whole thing is thirty-five hundred dollars. And I know that's an awful lot of money. But anything that we can get would be much appreciated.
Is that just the host of?
That's the host of tournament.
Just the host of. There's many more expenses outside that.
Well, yeah, that's not paying umpires anybody else. But we've made that commitment and, um, we are gathering sponsors from the area to help defray that cost. And certainly, I know the economic situation in Connersville. Thirty-five hundred dollars is too much to ask for, but anything that you could give us in the way of.
You have a quick puzzled look.
Well, our only issue, Ann, is we don't have another Board of Works meeting until August.
And we'd have to go through Board of Works?
Absolutely, we can't.
And we would, we don't have any money appropriated anywhere to make that kind of donation.
Okay.
So, we would have to have an advertisement that had to come back to the council.
Okay, in other words, Ohio, they, they weren't aware, they weren't aware of the procedure that needed to happen. Okay, I was not aware that it had to go through.
Perhaps, perhaps in the future we can help you out, but not, it doesn't look like this year we can.
There's no way we, there's nothing we can do, but, I mean, 'cause I've never been to the tournament. I mean, it's jam-packed. There are so many people down there.
It's great, but we can't.
The Board, the Board of Works has to approve any.
Okay.
What about the money we, we donated to that, that church group that's no longer?
We didn't do that.
I didn't know.
Did they not go through, okay.
Okay, well, again, procedurally, apparently, uh, we've dropped the ball in that respect. Um, we would ask, um, you, please ask anybody in town. We'll take anything.
Do they do these tournaments every year?
No, we don't. Um, we have the state tournaments every year. Uh, at least we have since nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-eight, okay? Um, and they're the smaller ones, but these, uh, these larger tournaments, we do not get every year uh, because it's competitive, granted, it's a competitive type situation.
How far in advance do you know you're gonna?
Uh, we found out in, um, March.
Okay, you come before us in March.
You can't do that without the.
In March, okay.
We could help you out for that year, but.
Okay, I, again, procedurally, apparently, we just did not understand what, what we needed to do. Um, I would encourage private citizens, if they would like to contribute to this, to contact somebody on the Board of Bay Ruth. Or businesses that you were involved with.
Do they drop a check off here?
They drop a check off here, that's fine. Uh, we would appreciate it. Again, it's such a boon to the entire city. And one thing I learned from raising money from Bay Ruth from the early, mid-eighties was if you go in and you ask somebody for a hundred dollars, they look at you very strangely. If you ask them for twenty, they, they might just give it to you. So, it, it will take any kind of donations. And come on down. It's really quite interesting. Our Connersville boys, our twelve-year-olds, put it all out on the field on, um, Sunday morning. They lost in the bottom of the sixth inning by one run. And this was a team that was the state champion last year from Irvington. Those, those little boys represent the city of Connersville very, very well. Our eleven-year-olds won. They, uh, won their, their league and will be moving on. So, this is an opportunity for the youth of Connersville to really portray Connersville well. And the paper's done a good job in covering it. And, uh, I don't know if TV three's been down there, but I know you did a really good job all summer covering the, covering the baseball games down there. That was very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
So, we will take donations from anyone. And, uh, please come on down, 'cause it's really, it's really social studies in action from the old social studies teacher. The interaction of kids from all over, different parts, um, different ethnic backgrounds, uh, different ideas. And I think that part of the learning process is so important for, for our kids to be able to participate in. And our nine-year-old team is really good. And although as the host team, we automatically have a team in it. These, our nine-year-olds this year have a legitimate shot of, of moving on to the.
They were in the state tournament team last year.
Yes, they did, as eight-year-olds, they did. And they have improved their, uh, and I think, again, positive things for the city. Uh, and positive things for the youth of the city. And I think that's so vitally important. Kid, you know, kids sometimes, particularly, um, twelve, thirteen-year-olds, don't get a very happy name. I understand that completely. Uh, but last weekend, they really acquitted themselves well and we should, should be very, very, very proud of them. It's fun. So, anybody who watches this on TV three, send your money to Connersville Bay Ruth. We can rock it off here at City Hall. And we will more than happy to help it. And be prepared to be inundated, uh, during the fair, fair week. We start on Wednesday. During the fair, so there's gonna be lots for people to do. And I think the influx of people in town will be really good.
It'll be great for the fair.
It, it should be. It should be great for the fair business because when they're not, if you're staying, for example, in Richmond, you're gonna have to drive thirty-five miles and you've got a game at ten in the morning and you've got another one at four in the afternoon. You're not gonna drive back to Richmond.
We should give them a golf cart. Ruby, we'll give them a golf cart and they can, okay.
I want the golf cart.
Sorry, I should've broken that.
I, you know, like, I, I will put that procedurally in what we need to do, 'cause apparently they just weren't aware you had to go through Board of Works. But again.
Well, I would hope that anybody watching, or anybody who sees this.
The council, they need to come to council first to ask for the money and then they'd appropriate the money, but it has to be, they need checks that are ready.
I was called at five after, obviously, at five after.
You couldn't have helped that.
I couldn't have. If you would've got here a quarter, tell it. Oh, okay.
They probably knew that one to put you under a fire.
And, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Since they're gonna be here during the fair, why don't you get with Cindy and Charlotte down to the extension office and maybe have them, um, get you, um, some kind of a calendar of events, um.
Ooh, thank you.
For the fair, for, during the day.
Uh-huh.
And maybe that will retain the people in town.
Good idea.
Good idea.
And maybe you should make a map of all the fast food places.
I already have, yeah. We've, we've already basically done that, but that is an excellent idea.
It'll keep them here.
It'll keep them here in town and will give them something to do. And again, the Frey County is one of the few fairs in Indiana that's still a free fair. So, that won't be any extra expense. So, that's something really, really, really in our favor. And also, business in the town, please be nice. Uh, I sent people all over this weekend and I happened to be in both Kroger's and, and Main Street Market today and have a chance to talk to people. And they said, you know, we have extra people in here this weekend. And I said, it was from the, it was from the tournament, 'cause you, you, you send them out to the people that, that help support you. But again, if anybody would like, honey, that's a great idea. I'll get down there. I'll talk to the people down. And I could even pass those things out at the gate.
Okay.
'Cause everybody goes.
Anybody else?
So, thank you.
I need to talk to you.
Yes, ma'am.
A minute, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna give you a contribution.
Oh, thank you.
If you'll stick around.
Oh, wow.
We wanna know how much it is. No, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Not, not forever.
It's more than two digits.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, a hundred pennies, that's good.
A hundred.
Okay, any other miscellaneous business? Uh, Fran, why don't you bring up that about Thursday? Were you speaking with Canora this Thursday, is that?
Uh, Connersville speak, yes, Daniel Canora, who will be on along with the Adam Kelly, the football coach.
Yeah, that'll be a good, good one, so I would ask people to watch that. Anything else?
I thought the bicentennial went real well.
Very well.
I think they did a great job.
Very good.
Wonderful hours and they really worked great.
Yes.
They did. We'll, we'll know better from the next, how to manage it. Okay, anything else? Ready adjourn? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All right, all right, good.